Good evening and welcome to the local planning agency for Thursday, August 6th. I'll call the meeting to order. We have everyone here, including Jim on the phone. Hi, Jim, how are you?
Hi Cindy, thanks for doing this.
You're welcome. Okay, so our next meeting on our agenda is the approval of the May 7th minutes. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 And we need a motion to entertain the June 4th 2020 minutes?
Removed.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, okay. And then on to our next thing, we do have some quasi judicial business coming before us. The next item on our agenda is the Hope Sound Publix, but that has been continued.
Madam Chairman, we do need a motion for you to continue that though.
Okay, so we will need a motion to continue that.
I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to move that the Publix site meeting to the August, I believe 16th.
August 20th meeting?
20th.
August 20th meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. On to our next item is NPH 2, the Comprehensive Plan Amendment 19-26 Sunshine State Carnations. This is a public hearing to consider a future land use map change from residential estate density, two units per acre, to low-density residential, five units per acre, on two parcels, approximately 19.44 acres located at 9450 Southeast Gomez Avenue in Hope Sound. And this is requested by Daniel Soro, AICP from Cotler and Hearing. It's going to be presented by Maria Joz with the Planning Growth Management Department. And is this something that we want to have a presence?
Yes, Madam Chair and Board Members, so as has been your practice in the past, you all know that this has, the future land use change has an accompanying request for rezoning. The factual matters, the background of the property is the same. And so in the past, you have allowed both the staff and the applicant to discuss those as one presentation. You must take two different motions, one, you make a decision on the land use change, and then you make a decision on the rezoning. And so the, so that we'll handle it that way, that'll be more efficient in terms of presentation. So given that, this first item is a legislative matter, but the second item is a quasi judicial matter. So for purposes of presentation, if I could ask the board members if you have any ex parte communication to disclose in reference to this application?
Yes.
I have none to disclose.
I do. I met with the applicants.
Met with the applicants? Okay, thank you.
I was contacted by the applicants, but did not meet with them.
I met with the applicant.
I met with the applicants with a Zoom meeting this week.
Okay, all right. So Ms. Joz, maybe I threw you for a loop, I didn't mean to, but, but anyway, the factual, the factual basis for your presentation, and then obviously then we will have, we're opening this public hearing, we will have to open the second public hearing, but we'll indicate that the presentation, unless there's some subtle changes that you want to make. So for the public, you will have an opportunity to speak on both this item, which is the future land use change, as well as the rezoning application. We're not, we're not circumventing any opportunities for public comment, but we do want to consolidate the presentation. And given that, since the, this is, the second piece of this is quasi judicial, we do want to go ahead and swear anyone in from staff or the applicant who may be providing testimony related to the quasi judicial matter.
Are there any intervenors?
No, there are not any, any formal interveners. Correct, Steph?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you were about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
I'm doing it.
Thank you.
Okay.
My name is Maria Joz, Planner at Growth Management Department. Since we are going to be doing the rezoning, Krista, shall I say, for the record, a copy of my work history?
Yes, please. And can I ask you to make sure you pull your mic closer? Remember, these are directional mics, and you have to speak directly into the mic. Okay.
Can everyone hear me? Okay. For the record, a copy of the agenda item and my work history has been turned in.
Related to the rezoning application, correct? Thank you.
My name is Maria Joz, Planner at the Growth Management Department. The first presentation that I have prepared for you today is regarding the Future Land Use Map Amendment Proposal, CPA 19-26 Sunshine State Carnations. After this presentation, I have also prepared another set of slides regarding the rezoning. The proposed Future Land Use Map Amendment, the applicant is proposing to change the parcel from residential estate density, which allows two units per acre, to low-density residential, which allows a maximum of five units per acre. The subject site is highlighted in red. The subject site is 19.44 acres located at Southeast Gomez Avenue in Hope Sound. Here we can see the Future Land Use Map. Highlighted in red, once again, is the subject parcel. So currently, it is residential density, I mean, sorry, estate density, residential To the north, we have low-density residential, future land use, five units per acre. It contains detached, single-family homes. The developed density, meaning the actual density that ended up being built out, we calculated it to be 2.23 UPA, units per acre. And that's Southeast Royal Street, what we see here. To the south of the subject parcel, we have, once again, low-density residential, future land use, five units per acre maximum density. So in the south, there are some detached, single-family homes. The developed density in the south is 0.94 units per acre, and that one is Southeast Woodmere Street. To the east is residential estate density, which is two units per acre. There's detached, single-family homes. The developed density is 2.44 units per acre, and the street is Southeast Sable Street. To the west, as you can see, we have the FEC Railroad and Southeast Dixie Highway. Staff recommendation is approval for the proposed Future Land Use Map Amendment. The proposed land use designation is generally compatible to the neighboring parcels and their land uses. This proposal meets 12 out of 13, 13 criteria that discourages urban sprawl, and also meets eight out of the eight additional criteria that discourages the proliferation of urban sprawl. This can be found in Section 2.2 of the staff report. The subject site already contains necessary infrastructure, such as water and sewer provisions, and the site is located within the Primary Urban Service District, or PUSD. The proposed density allows a maximum of five units per acre. However, the choice of the zoning district can restrict the maximum number of units and reduce the density. So considering all these factors, staff recommends approval of the proposed change from residential estate density to low-density residential, which allows a maximum of five units per acre. That concludes my presentation, and if you have any questions, feel free to ask me. I can do the rezoning presentation.
Yes.
So since the rezoning proposal is concurrent to the Future Land Use Map proposal, I will now go on to the rezoning PowerPoint slide. Sunshine State Carnation rezoning. So what we see here is the current zoning atlas. So it's a map that shows all the zoning districts in the area. So highlighted in blue, highlighted in blue is the subject parcel, and as you can see, the current zoning of the subject parcel is R2B and R2. Here, I have created a table based on the different standards allowed by the different zoning districts. So there are, the applicant has requested the zoning district RS5, so that I have highlighted here in yellow. However, it is important to consider the other districts that can also implement the future land use designation of low-density residential. So members of the LPA can vote recommending approval of the applicant's request of RS5 or the most appropriate zoning district. So as you can see in this table, we can see the minimum lot area required, the dwelling types allowed, and also the maximum residential density allowed. RS5, the minimum lot area required, is 7,500, which is the same requirement as the current zoning that the subject site has. And the dwelling types allowed is single-family. None of the RS zoning districts allow multifamily duplexes, none of that. RS3, RS4, and these RM zoning districts that you see here, they all implement the low-density residential future land use, so we can consider it. However, staff does not recommend considering the RM zoning districts, because as you can see, the RM zoning districts do allow multifamily. So the use of multifamily does not fit well with the character of the area. And some other differences that can be noted is that RS3, for example, the minimum lot area required is higher, it's at 15,000, and the maximum residential density is three units per acre. So we did some analysis regarding the overall lot sizes in the neighboring land. So north of the subject site is Royal Street. The minimum lot area required by the zoning, north of the subject site, is 7,500 square feet. However, the lots are all approximately 14,000 square feet, except for two lots being 17,000. South of the subject site is Woodmere Street, and once again, the zoning that has is the R2B and R2 zoning, so the minimum lot area required is only 7,500 square feet. But most of the lots there are larger than one acre. However, two sites do appear to have been split, creating houses on smaller lots. So that we can see here. East of the subject site is Sable Street. The minimum lot area required by the zoning there is 10,000 square feet. That is what HR1 zoning requires. However, most of the lots there are 13,068 square feet, with two of them being 16,000 square feet, and a couple others being 30,000 and 27,000. So I'm going back to the slide to see, to show once again the table. Currently, the R2B and R2 zoning, the current zoning of the subject site is category B. The proposed RS5 is category A. Category A zoning districts are designed specifically to implement the comp plan. Since the applicant's request is RS5, and staff recommends RS5, however, like I said, like I mentioned before, these other zoning districts can be considered. So if you have any questions, please let me know. And if you don't have any questions, we can go to the presentation that the applicant has prepared.
I think you may have a question.
Yeah, Joe has a question.
Yep.
Hi.
Two of them, actually, one from the rezoning, but I want to clear the clarification. You said that in the, the current neighborhood to the south, I believe it's on a, is it Windermere?
Woodmere Street.
Okay. That the ones, the two lots that are up against Gomez, they were, I'm going to speak like roughly almost an acre, but whoever owned each of those lots took advantage of the current zoning and split. Is that, is that what I heard? I believe I saw that one.
Yes, so.
I'm sorry, but so it was 7,500 acres is the minimum, and they had far been above that, so they were able to split their lot, or at least reduce the size and make it into two smaller units?
Yeah, they split it and they made, created houses on smaller lots, one being 13,000 and the other 11,000. Because the minimum lot area required by the R2B and R2 zoning is only 7,500.
Okay. And that's even in the 2, 3, and 5 area, would still be 7,500 minimum. So it would allow those to, so I didn't get a chance. Traditionally, before it comes before us, I like to drive by the site. What is on those split lots? Are there two houses on each of those split lots? And I'm sorry if that.
Yeah, I can actually pull up the.
If you could.
Satellite view.
Yes, ma'am. And again, I apologize, I should have told you ahead of time I was going to ask that question.
Oh, no, that's okay.
Okay, so there are structures on that?
Yes.
Yes, yes, houses.
Okay. And the other one, if I could, back on the future land use, as I was looking at that, when I first started reviewing this, when we got our packets last week, I was curious as to, we have the low-density stretch, and then to the east of that is the estate. And when I started looking at the size of the units per acre, I was very confused by how it is that so many on the east side that are zoned out, is under the estate, are real tight, and then the ones that should be far out. So I can only assume those are old, older houses that were grandfathered in before that came into place. And then in that middle section, which is low-density, which is, has five, those are further apart. So I mean, that was just an inconsistency, not, not with what we have, but with the, with the history. You have to kind of go back. Paul, please, if you can.
Yes, sir. Paul Schilling, Growth Management Director. There are several subdivisions within that vicinity, which were actually platted prior to any zoning or comprehensive planning requirements. So we find that often in the county, but, so those lots are lots of record, they're platted prior to those regulations, so that's why you see that.
Okay. I figured as much, but I want to get a confirmation. Okay, those are my two questions.
Anybody else?
I'm going to save mine till the end.
Okay. Do we want to let the applicant go?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'll pull up the applicant's presentation.
Thank you, Maria.
Martin's here.
You need to.
Thank you, Maria Joz. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you, Board, for the opportunity to, to present tonight on this, on this application. Commissioners, on behalf of the property owners and applicant, my name is Daniel Soro with the Land Planning Firm of Cotler and Hearing. I would like to enter into the record the mailer affidavit that we have noticed everyone within 1,000 feet of the subject site for the meeting this evening, and also a copy of the presentation to the clerk's office. So.
Dan, I think you're going to, you're going to need to come closer to the mic.
Okay. Is there a slide advanced, sir, that, or would you mind advancing the slides for me, Maria Joz?
Not that I know of, but I can go through the slides for you, I can click for you.
Thank you very much. Next slide, please. Here with us tonight, we do have the owners of the property, Mr. Pete Nissen and Eric Nissen, also our legal counsel, who is also a family friend of the property owners, Mr. Nat Nason with the law firm of Nason Jaeger. With Cotler and Hearing, we do have Leah Heinzelman in attendance, and our traffic consultant, Mrs. Susan O'Rourke, is here as well. Next slide. The subject site is a little bit less than 20 acres. It actually is made up of two parcels. The request that staff has just presented is a comp plan change from residential estate density to low-density residential, and a concurrent rezoning from R2 and R2B to RS5. Next slide. The Nissens have owned this property, and they've been working and tax-paying citizens in Hope Sound, Martin County, for the last 62 years. Their farm currently is not under farming agricultural operations. About six years ago, due to some national policy changes, it made it hard to be a viable business and make it, make the economics work for, for the farming industry. It's a similar story that we've heard across rural America and all over America, where the family farms are, are becoming, becoming less and less. Today, 95% of the cut flowers are grown outside of the United States of America. So, next slide. This parcel is really a hole in the donut. If you can look at the surrounding development around the subject site, you can see that it is developed and has been developed predominantly by single-family uses. So all the properties to the north, to the east, and to the west have been developed, and this is one of the last vacant properties within this subject area. It is within the urban service boundary. You know, one of the things that we look at in Martin County is, is areas that are prime for development inside the urban service boundary, so that we can leave the agricultural lands and the other areas outside the urban service boundary untouched. So this proposal does discourage urban sprawl, it is a good use of the existing utility infrastructure already in place, and, and it's a logical development growth pattern that needs to happen for, for areas that are like this. Next slide. On the left-hand side of this slide, you'll see the current land use in place. That whole stretch along, in between Gomez and the railroad tracks is low-density residential currently, except for our parcel, which is, which is still the estate density. So in meeting with some of the residents over the past, past half-year or so, you know, one of the things that we heard was make this compatible. This needs to be compatible with the surrounding development. And you can see that we're pink, and everyone else along that strip is orange. We're asking to, to make that strip orange. As you can see on the, on the right-hand side of the screen, with the comp plan change, that whole strip will be low-density residential. This is the zoning request, which is the second item the Board will be voting on this evening. You can see on the left-hand side, the entire row of development is either yellow and blue, and that's the R2B zoning district, and the R2 zoning district for that little strip along the railroad tracks. And I like this slide, because what it shows is that when the comprehensive plan was changed in Martin County in 1982, the existing development pattern in those zoning districts were already in place. The only two parcels that weren't developed is the parcel in purple and the, and our parcel. The parcel in purple is the Sablewood Development. So when they came in for development after the comprehensive plan change, the R2B and R2 zoning district was no longer valid, they couldn't use that. So they had to go for RS4. The zoning district for RS4, which is the same size as Sunshine State Carnation, would allow a max density up to 80 units. However, I think it's important to note that they were only able to fit 39 units on that development site. So although their zoning allowed up to 80 units after meeting all the land development regulations, all the criteria for their LDRs, they were only able to fit 39 homes. So it goes to show that although we're requesting RS5 zoning district, which in theory, you could think you could fit 100 homes on there with 20 acres, it's just not possible, likely, and it won't happen. Can I go to the next slide, please? Next slide, or just, next slide. So when we apply for a comprehensive plan amendment, staff has to look at meeting one of the objective items, as you see on the screen. We only have to meet one to make it valid. However, we've met two, and may I suggest even a third one. But the first one is past changes in land use designations in the general area, make the proposed use logical and consistent with these uses, and adequate public services are available. So you can see the growth of the area around the subject site, it already has utilities in place. And then the second one, the growth of the area, like I said, it's been vacant for 62 years. It's been farmed, it's been, it's been used as, as that site, and now it's, it's, it's time to develop. And even the last option, which I would also like to suggest, that it does provide the county and residents more housing options within, within the, within the area. Next slide. Next slide. It does discourage urban sprawl. We have to meet 13 out of 13 criteria for urban sprawl. As, as Maria Joz pointed out, we meet 12 out of the 13. So, so that's, and then the next slide, to reduce urban sprawl, we only need to meet four out of the eight, but however, we meet all eight out of eight criteria to reduce the urban sprawl. You know, when the residential needs capacity analysis came out in 2019, one of the options for the staff and the Board to consider for, for meeting those needs of the residential needs is to increase the densities in the primary urban service district and the secondary urban service district. You know, this is one of the areas that would be considered. There's very few tracts of land left within the primary urban service district that are undeveloped, and that would be good sites for, for density increases, especially when utilities are already there. So this is, this is a, a good site for that opportunity. Next slide, please. This is the SMRU Service Areas Map. Click a couple more times, please. We are within the, the urban service boundary. You can see there is a water main and a sanitary force main running along the site. There's actually a platted tract of land to the north of our property called 6th Street, although it's undeveloped, but that's where they run the force main along the northern side of our property down Gomez Road. I love this slide, and I think it's going to help understand what we can and can't do with the RS5 zoning district. And it compares the RS5 zoning district to the current zoning in place today on the subject property. So we ask for RS5 because it's most compatible to what we have existing today. In fact, I, the code even suggests that it's more strict than what we have today. So, so you can see that going from, from left to right, everything is similar, minimum lot area, minimum lot width, the max density residential, and then the max height, until we get to the minimum open space. With our proposal, we actually have to provide 50% open space, as opposed to 30%, which exists on the property today. Our front setback is five feet greater, our rear setback is four feet longer, and the side setback is, is four feet longer as well. So that's the comparison between the R2B and the RS5. You know, what we heard from some of the residents is, we don't want any duplexes, we don't want any multifamily, we don't want any apartments or townhomes. don't want any multifamily. We don't want any apartments or townhomes. The RS5 restricts that. It has to be standalone, single-family units, and you can't do zero-lot-line homes either. So, these have to be a minimum 60-foot-wide lot with a, meeting all the setback criteria with the zoning district. Next slide. Now, we looked at this exhibit just to see actually how many units could be fit on this subject site. So, looking at all the land development regulation codes in Martin County, we developed an exhibit to demonstrate that 100 units is not possible. It's not achievable. Click one time, Maria. And, and what we show, and important in Martin County is something called a density transition zone, meaning that you have to meet the density surrounding your property. So, on the south side, along Woodmere Street, those are acre lots. Some are, I think two are a little bit larger than an acre. And then on the north, at Royal Street, those are a third of an acre, which are a little bit larger. So, you can see the estate lots on this exhibit do match the acre lots to the south and the third of an acre lots to the north. When you develop now, after '82, when the comprehensive plan was developed, you have to meet the subdivision code criteria. You have to have stormwater, your right-of-way, your setbacks, all these different things that go into how you develop your property and take up a majority of your usable space. So, once you factor all those into a site plan, you're really left with areas that is not, is usable. Click one time, Maria. So, you can see that this exhibit that is shown here yields 50 lots. So, even with the RS5 zoning district and all the other land development criteria offered, this, this is only allowed to have 50 units. So, I, you know, I, I hope that, you know, provides some assurances. But also, as, as, as was shown on staff's presentation, a lot split has occurred on this area. That property owner has, has subdivided their property to what's allowable by the code, which is 7,500 square feet. So, so that has two different PCNs and two different tracts that, that are available. So, so that would be, you know, we would be using 7,500 square feet on the center on this exhibit. Next slide. So, then in closing, you know, we, we meet all of staff's criteria. The land designation of properties to the north, south, and east, and west is compatible. We have full approval from staff on both the comprehensive plan amendment and the rezoning, and it's, and it's in compliance with all the Martin County growth management plan policies. The proposed density would allow a maximum of five units per acre, both the land use and the zoning. So, we would be happy to answer any questions that staff may have. Our, our entire development team is here, and we thank you for your time.
Any questions?
Start with that side.
They said no.
No.
No questions. The, I want to clarify also, kind of in the same thing that I was with staff. So, as far as the size of these lots, you're asking for the five units per acre, but then later on said it's not really possible nor proposed. So, if it's, if it's not gonna fit within that size, so we have 7,500, I'm looking again at that one lot in the southern development, we're using the current zoning. He made a 7,500-square-foot lot. So, every single other lot within your proposed area would have to be that same size. Is that, is that correct?
Yes and no. There are provisions in the code that require density transition zones. So, when you're coming in for site plan approval, which we're not doing tonight.
Right, yes.
We're asking for comprehensive plan and zoning. When, when the applicant comes in for a site plan amendment, they would need to demonstrate compliance with all the land development regulations. Those land development regulations require density transition zones, stormwater management requirements, right-of-way requirements, all the other items that go into a project that you can't use for density.
I was waiting for Ms. Story to push her buzzer and say, now, this is not a site plan discussion.
Mr. Sorrow knows the drill.
Understood, understood. And then the other one, and you kind of said the word stormwater, and I hate to use the, the word, but flood. The, this is not, to the southwest of this, there was a lot of issues. Again, not familiar with all the specifics. Flooding not a concern, per se? Any of the neighborhoods currently have that issue?
Mr., all of those items, Paul Schilling, growth management director, those, those items, as the consultant and Mr. Sorrow said, all the technical aspects of the development, all the stormwater, the right-of-way, the public works, those matters will be viewed and reviewed as part of a site plan application.
Okay, premature, my question.
So, where there have been, of course, no, no stormwater control out there, new development will require stormwater maintenance plan, stormwater compliance with all the regulations, including any state agencies. So, those matters would be viewed down the road.
Okay. And then one last question, and then actually, Maria, might be back to you, was in the urban sprawl, it said 12 out of 13, of which is at or above the criteria. What was the one that was not met?
I can pull it up.
If you would, please. It's eight out of eight, and again, what, you're only required to have four of the eight, and you have eight out of the eight for the proposal. So, and then I'll sit back for a little bit.
I was thinking it may be a good opportunity to see if Mr. Moore is still with us.
Yes.
Okay, good.
I am, and I do have a question.
Go ahead, Jim, I guess.
In the Sablewood development, it was RS4 zoning. Can you give me a comparison of the size of the two plots undeveloped? I'm sorry, I could not see your presentation.
I think the question is the difference between RS4 and an RS5. Jim, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, we're talking about the developable lot under, under restrictions of acreage, and, and, and I think that, you know, there are two restrictive components. One is a transition zone, and the other is, you know, minimum lot size.
If I could answer the.
Yes.
The first.
Which of the 12 out of 13?
Yes. So, 12 out of the 13 criteria, criteria were met. So, the criteria that, that staff analyzed and said did not meet is criteria number 11: fails to encourage a functional mix of uses. So, no, the site is surrounded by one-use, single-use residential, predominantly detached single-family. So, this, though this fails to encourage a functional mix of uses, so a mix of uses would be residential and, you know, my commercial, all of that together. Though this fails to encourage a functional mix of uses, it is infill development that is comparable to the established residential uses. So, that's why it does not encourage, does not discourage the proliferation of urban sprawl.
The urban sprawl, okay, understood. Thank you for looking that up.
Okay, and then, no problem. And then the second question was.
Was, I think, again, the difference between RS4 and RS5.
Oh, okay.
Again, Jim, make sure I'm not putting words. Was that your question?
Yeah, and also what the, what the maximum, or what the, the lot size of the other development that was zoned at, at RS4.
The Sablewood.
Sablewood, yeah.
So, RS4 zoning district, the minimum lot area required is 10,000 square feet, and I'm looking at Sable Street now.
And not Sable Street, Sablewood, the development that was further down.
Correct.
Members of the LPA, if I may, Clyde Doolan, comprehensive planning administrator. It was Mr. Sorrow who brought up the Sablewood subdivision, which is not quite on the screen here. The, in Maria's map, it's in purple there, just to the south. We did not prepare in our analysis, the lot size, analysis of the Sablewood subdivision that Mr. Sorrow mentioned. Mr. Sorrow may have the information about the lot sizes in the Sablewood subdivision.
I guess my, my point is that there is within the neighborhood a comparable that has RS4.
Where?
Yes, I can, I can bring up the, the map that shows a better view of the zoning district of the Sablewood.
Yeah. Jim, we're going to the interactive map on the web in order to look up the information.
So, I'm right now.
I agree with that, Clyde.
I'm, right now, I'm just going to the general internal map through our Martin County website.
Right.
And I'm zooming in. So.
I may not be able to catch up with you.
So, here we can see the subject site, and I'm gonna turn on the zoning atlas, so we can see the zoning. Okay, so, yes, the purple that we see is RS4, and it's Sablewood. The lot sizes. Point 32 acres.
About a third, yeah.
Yeah, third, third acre. So, it looks like point 27 acre, point 28.
So, basically, consistent with, with a third.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, since the minimum lot area required by RS4 is 10,000 square feet.
Correct.
If I may, for the record also, the Sablewood development came in before Martin County adopted the density transition zones. So, that's something relatively new that's been, that's been included with Martin County's land development regulations.
It's actually a comprehensive plan requirement, density transition.
So, I mean, that's just the, the standard procedural of an existing neighborhood is, you're not, you're not gonna have a change. It's already in place, and when you make the changes for any future.
There's a policy, and I, I won't protect, Mr. Doolan will stop me, the perspective, the policy is to protect existing neighborhoods.
Correct.
Jim, did that answer your question of the RS4 versus RS5?
Yeah, it, it, the only, the only thing I wasn't able to see was what the relative overall size is. Is Sablewood approximately 20 acres?
Looking at the lots, most of the lots are around less than third of an acre, I would say.
And.
I, I gather that, but I'm just trying to compare the overall acreage of Sunshine Carnation versus the Sablewood lot originally. Are they both approximately 20-acre sites?
The whole Sablewood development versus the Sunshine?
Yeah.
Maria, can you do a quick calc?
Yes, I can do a quick measurement.
And for those of you in the room, I think you have access to this same tool.
Yes.
Yes.
This is a public tool, so if you want to explore before any additional hearings occur, you have this same opportunity.
Yep, you got it.
Yes, so it's about 19, 19 acres, 18.9, it's close to 20.
And.
Roughly the same acreage.
Yes, yes. So, the subject site is 19.44 acres, and we just did, we just measured the Sablewood, and that is also about 19 acres.
And, Mr. Moyer, I did a rough calc. A third of an acre is about a 14,000-square-foot lot size, which is very comparable to some of the existing lots surrounding the subject site.
Correct.
Any other questions from?
Thank you, staff. Thank you, applicant.
Well, yeah. The example that the applicant has put up shows a theoretical density of basically, or number of homes of about 50. Does, does staff concur with that finding, using density transition and so on and so forth? And if I do the math, that works out to an average lot size of 20 acres and 50, what's it about, a half acre, about? Average lot size would be about a half acre, or a third to a half acre, somewhere in that calculation. Because some of the lots are gonna be an acre due to density transition, and some of the lots are gonna be 7,500-foot minimums. On what, on the example we just looked at, that you just did, that already had the existing homes, how many homes are on that 19 acres?
39.
39, 39.
I'm hearing from the audience, 39.
39, okay.
Mr. Watson, if I may, so what, what we're looking at here is a newer, let's just say the Sablewood is a somewhat newer subdivision, so it has presumably, I haven't had an opportunity to analyze what the applicant just brought forward tonight, but, but the standards today are, when, when we're plating and developing subdivisions, we create building lots, and then we have other tracts of land for the stormwater tracts, the landscape maintenance, or landscape tracts, the preserve area management tracts. So, those areas are separate and distinct from the lot size and lot areas. So, some of that area you may have noticed in Sablewood toward, toward Gomez was actually stormwater.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. But, okay, so my original question, which I, like you said, I'm, I'm sure you probably didn't take, but he has a theoretical of 50 homes, which is about half the theoretical density that's allowed. The theoretical density is 100, and he's showing 50. Has the staff actually looked at that? Do you believe that calculation in general, maybe that's a sticky question. I don't want to get in trouble, but.
You're about to.
Yeah. I'm about to get there.
Fred Lightly, my friend.
I'm just, but I just, well, the theory, understanding density transition and so on and so forth, there are certain things that are inescapable, because density transition basically takes the zoning that's next door and applies it to your property, which I personally am not in agreement with, but that's life. But that's what's happening, so, so in reality, it, it looks like he'll get about half the actual theoretical density that, that, that would be allowed under the, under the five units per acre.
And, Madam Chair, just, and, you know, we've, and let me just confirm that the audience understands. This is a land use change and a rezoning, so for illustrative, illustrative purposes, the applicant has shown something, it's part of the presentation, to support their request from the LPA. The staff has not had an opportunity, nor would they at this point do that type of analysis, so staff cannot confirm or deny the numbers. You know, factually, what this, Mr. Schilling has indicated is, there in addition to the lots where the homes are, there's stormwater, there's right-of-way, if there's any type of habitat that must be protected, all those things would, would reduce the potential number of individual lots. But for the purposes of the public, this is not a guarantee that there would be 50 units of, that number is completely speculative. It's for illustrative purposes only, because this is not a site plan approval at this point, so, so, anyway.
But I feel it would be safe to say that, on that site, that they're not gonna get the theoretical five units per acre in reality.
I, yes, I.
I think that would be.
Meeting, especially as I was looking at the restrictions between the current and the proposed with spacing of 20 feet versus 25, so it's actually a greater restriction on the distance between the houses, structures.
So, maybe Ms. Joes, for the benefit of Mr. Moyer, if you could describe what you have just pulled up on the screen.
Um, yes, so we just now pulled up the plat of Sable, Sablewood, and the total number of units in that plat that was created in 1988 is 39, 39 units.
Correct, and that includes stormwater management areas as well as streetscapes and utility seasonings.
Yeah, it includes dry retention in the front.
Yeah, in the 39, the count, we did not count the retention area, or the streets, or anything. This is just 39 lots, residential lots, I mean.
Can you describe it for him, there is a-
There's, Mr. Moyer, there is a preserve area tract, there's dry detention tracks, easements, of course, the roadway, and other easements. It's important to note also that in today's standards, not that it's happening on this plat, but we did not put landscape tracks and stormwater tracks and preserve area tracks on single-family lots. So those, when we say, when we talk about lots in these circumstances, those would be strictly limited to the single-family and accessory structures.
Yes, and I think, my point is that they were able to get 39 buildable lots, as well as all of the other amenities that are required under county law, on a piece of property roughly similar, but zoned at RS4, which allows a larger lot size, 10,000 square feet as opposed to 7,500 square feet.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Do we want to go to public comment?
Right, yes.
Okay, how are we going to handle that?
Okay, Madam Chair, let me, you, now, you have the slips that people have pulled out, I mean, already provided, and we may have some people from outside that we will need to bring in if they're on the list. So for the benefit of the public, we have two microphones, and it is a requirement that you keep your mask on, so you need to speak right into the microphone, it is a directional mic, so you must come close. So you may use the sanitary wipes as you approach if you would like to wipe it off before you begin speaking, and then we will also make sure that we're wiping it off afterwards so that we are practicing appropriate CDC guidelines for everybody's safety. And so we'll announce the names, and then we may have to bring people in from outside. There's a, there is a three-minute time limit, and I do have a timer, it's not the one that you're used to, and I hopefully have figured out how to work this. I came in and practiced this afternoon, but I'm not guaranteeing anything, so, and for the members of the public, just please state your name for the record, and we'll wait till you state your name, and then you'll have three minutes, and this makes some kind of a noise to indicate the three minutes is up. I don't know what that noise is, actually.
Okay, great, so then our first speaker would be Gail Marie Merrill, followed by Shandra Tellarico.
And Madam Chair, just one more thing, so we're, this is on the land use change, you would, the public could also have an opportunity to speak on the rezoning later, so the presentations have been made, and so this was the land use change, and the local planning agency will take a vote on the land use change, and then we'll move into the rezoning request.
Good evening, my name is Gail Marie Merrill. I live on the corner of Royal and Gomez. I am most effective when constructions start, I will be effective of the increase of the property. No offense to you gentlemen, first time meeting you, your property is called the nasty neighbor. You claim you've been there 50-
Ma'am, ma'am, we really need you to face forward, because we will pick you up.
I just want to let you know that they have been there 50 years, and they are nasty neighbors. I want to know why they are not caught up to the compliance of this property. It is not up to par. They just got done demolishing stuff, there's not boundaries, we brought this up to the county, and I want to know why it's not up to par. They're asking for additional work. Now, if you wouldn't mind bringing up the film there to show what you guys are demonstrating, this is only a drawing, like you're saying. This is upsetting me, I understand the properties, yes, develop it, it's there, don't be greedy, I'm saying, it's a side part, I am on one side, you're telling me you're putting a retention pond right behind my home. Where's a guarantee that there's going to be a wall, there's going to be any of this? They're getting the property to give it to a developer, then we're going to have to deal with the developer. That is not fair, and shame on all of you if you haven't gone by this property to see the community. We keep up with it, I keep up with my home. Let me tell you, code enforcement is not making them keep up with the compliance, answer that to me. If you have your property up to par, then yes, you can have what you're wanting to put in there, but let me tell you, 99 homes is not going to work, and how are you going to put it on Gomez? The definitely other property has come up and said, "We can't handle the traffic now, we have so much problem," and they're saying, "We're not enlarging our road, they're not going to have a pass to pull in, go out." What does that do to us on Gomez? What does it do to me and Royal? They can have what matches up against us, but in the interim, they need to clean up their property. They are nasty neighbors, that's unacceptable to me. Code enforcement tells me, "Clean up your yard, don't do this, don't do that," they can have a dead, everything, it's trashy. And when would they do that? Then they can come up and ask for all of this, but until then, clean your house up first. Don't say you've been there 50 years, are they grandfathered in not to have to clean up? I ask you that. What is going to happen? I live right there, they took a house down, and that little corner up there, that front corner you're thinking it's grass and green, it's not. They took down a residential house and put it inside a septic tank in 2018. We can't find the permit or any of the paperwork, but let me tell you, Jenkins said his little helper, George, your assistant minister, "You can't find the paperwork," answer me that. I have paperwork to hand-
Ma'am, your time is-
Thank you.
I get it, do I have paperwork, who can I hand that to?
Thank you. I'm sorry?
Who do I hand my paperwork to? So you all can see what we're really dealing with.
What, ma'am, what is the paperwork you wanted to turn in?
Who do I turn it to? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Shandra Tellarico, followed by, did Anthony Tellarico want to speak too separately? Okay.
Shandra Tellarico, a Hopestown resident on Woodmere Street. I own, my husband and I own just over an acre of property on the land south of the proposal. You guys discussed today about potentially 50 homes, but that doesn't mean that's going to happen that way. And as a resident who purposely bought my home about five years ago because there wasn't urban sprawl, feels like this is an encroachment on what I purchased and the value of my land. And that means something to me, because I went through the housing crisis, and I can't do that again, because you guys decide that all of a sudden you're going to put 50 to 100 houses on land next to me. It means something to me. In addition to that, you mentioned Sablewood. They were able, with larger lot proposals, to get 39, and doesn't mean you guys aren't going to give exceptions, so even with the smaller, I can't imagine what it'll end up being. You also talked about the land proposals before 83. You'll notice the lots that I'm on are about an acre, they don't meet the seven per acre or five per acre. You're asking for way more for no reason, no reason, in what you're, from what you're proposing, it doesn't make any sense. Overall, as a resident who lives in this neighborhood, I just don't think it's right that you guys don't think this is urban sprawl. There's only four egresses across the railroad track, an extra 100 homes, which means, you know, four people to a home, there's a lot more people, a lot more traffic that you didn't even talk about, you just talked about Gomez, you didn't talk about the railroad tracks, you didn't talk about fire and safety. What are we going to do when we can't get through or get where we need to be? It's just not right.
Thank you. Anthony Tellarico, followed by, followed by Bruce, oh boy, Montefusco?
So, to me, it seems very deceptive, you know, with the acreage requirement, you're asking for more than what's actually, you're saying is impossible to develop, why are you even asking for five homes per acre? It doesn't make any sense. So if you're saying you can't develop that way to true five houses per acre or get exceptions, that's one thing, but that's not reality in this case, so I just don't understand it, why we're even asking or even having to debate about this. It seems like it's a handout to the developer or the property owner to try and get them more money for their property, I disagree with that. And, you know, if we're going to start doing that, then I would request, you know, maybe build a mobile home park on my land, or, you know, put 20 houses per acre, multi-story homes there, then when does it stop? So that's a whole issue there, and nobody's even addressed that, so. Well, I also noticed on the map today that you guys have a future land use designation that's changing our zoning on our property, which doesn't make sense, like I've got nothing in the mail for that, so I'm not even sure what that is, but it seems to me you could get by with the same equivalent zoning, at least, or at most, four houses per acre, similar to how the other development is. So, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. So Bruce Montefusco, followed by Brad Gunter.
Hi, good evening, Bruce Montefusco, Hopestown resident for 45 years. Couple things here, the layout that was shown here with the houses on that piece of property, that is just a proposal, it could look like that, it could not necessarily be that, so you're really not sure of how it can be done. It's going to be up to the developer when they finally get down to the property to sit there and say, "Okay, this is how we're going to build it out." You've got, you've got these lots, and my question is, if you put this five acres per, or five units per acre on there, how difficult it is would it be down the road to subdivide those lots? Because what's being shown is not necessarily what's going to be developed there. So could you put, if the houses are not laid out in the way that is being shown on that picture, can those lots be subdivided, and then in the future, more houses be added in? Second thing is, on the proposal here, it said, "At this current time, under the current future land use, the traffic that's generated on Gomez, as shown, the parcel generates 417 daily trips, this parcel, under the current layout, would generate 417 daily trips, 31 a.m. peak hour trips, and 39 p.m. peak hour trips, under the existing future land use. Under the proposed future land use, what they want to do with this five units per acre, the site now would generate 982 additional daily trips on that road, 982 additional trips on that road, 72 a.m. peak hour trips in rush hour, 96 p.m. peak hour trips, afternoon rush hour. The change in trips between the proposed and existing future land use is an increase of, an increase of 565 daily trips on that dual-lane road, 41 a.m., increased 41 a.m. peak hour trips, and increase of 57 p.m. peak hour trips, with 35 trips in the peak direction." And so this, according to this, this change is the subject of this study, which is, was produced by these guys. So that's all I've got to say, it's an awful lot of traffic on a two-lane road, and there's nothing that's going to guarantee that what they're showing you on that picture is going to be what they actually develop, and I'm certainly concerned about subdivision, because I've seen it in other places, in Savannah and other places, where they had big lots, and all of a sudden they started subdividing them and places, things went crazy. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Brad Gunter, followed by Douglas Bernard.
Hi, good evening, Brad Gunter, I live at 8343 Southeast Woodmere Street. If you notice the map, I am actually on the north side of Woodmere Street, just south of the property, so directly impacted, I have several of my neighbors here tonight on the same side of the street as me, and we have the same concerns, I've actually sent these concerns to the commissioner so they have that in writing. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight, and I appreciate the conversation and the, you know, the debate that's been taking place, especially some of the comments you've made. I'm not going to talk about the traffic, which has already been addressed, a couple things that I do want to address, though, are the flooding issues, which has already been talked about, we have major flooding on Gomez, specifically in front of Woodmere, at the corner of Gomez and Woodmere, so it's a major issue, how is that going to be addressed? The second thing is, there's been a lot of dirt movement on the property in the last several months, and it took place, we went over there, it took place multiple months during the weekend, and is there a permit for that dirt movement? What's been taking place? Are they trying to mitigate some type of soil issue? Has there been an FDEP permit pulled for that? So what is actually the status of that work that took place? I don't even know if the county knows about that work, so I will bring it up in this hearing to make it official. The thing that I would like to focus in on is the fact that there's a lot of verbiage, shell games going on, in terms of the R5 is more restrictive than the R2, or the two units per acre is less restrictive than the five units per acre. Well, if that's the case, why don't we just make it two units per acre? We live on over one acre, and if you look at the transition plan that they proposed, I don't know that it meets the county transition requirement, because the properties that are abutting my property and my neighbors' property are not one-acre properties, they are the width of 150 feet or so, approximately, but they look like they're a half to maybe .4 acres. I don't know that that meets the county transition plan, and so I just want to make sure that that's addressed, because that is a major concern for all the neighbors on our block. And if you look at Woodmere Street, they're all one-plus acre lots, Darla Street to the south is one-plus acre lots, and then you go to the north and there are three lots per acre, and now we're talking about putting in that center of that, it's going to be six or so houses, maybe even more, because that's what they're proposing. Obviously, this isn't what's going to be approved at this point, but we're going to have to address that after this, after this hearing tonight, so just wanted to get my comments on the record.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Douglas Bernhard, followed by Mary Gavin.
Yes, good evening, my name is Douglas Bernhard, and I reside on Sable Street, which, according to what I've seen here, is right across the street from where the egress and entry into this new proposed development. To be honest with you, I don't like what you're asking for, and the reason is, you're not going to develop it. You're asking for something to up the market value to resell. I would be a whole lot more comfortable if the people that were going to develop it were here, making the proposal.
Sir, could you address your comments to the local planning agency, please? Thank you.
I would be much more comfortable with their request if it was accompanied by what they really want to do. I want to see the reality in the dirt. The reality in the dirt to the north is three homes per acre, the reality in the dirt to the east is three homes per acre, the reality in the dirt to the south is one home per acre. What do they really want to have there? Until they tell us what they really want to have, to grant something is based on a wish. We wish to do this. Don't grant favors based on wishes. They talk about stormwater, you pave that area, you put homes, you make that impermeable. I can tell you, the night of the meeting, the first meeting, excuse me, that was supposed to happen, I was wading down Sable Street and water to the middle of my thigh, the middle of my thigh, and it was running down Sable Street off the Carnation Farm, an area that is completely unpaved, that should have seen the maximum amount of water, excuse me, seeping into the ground, and yet it was running down my street, and I'm in water up to here. What are all those homes going to do to the stormwater issue? We don't know. Our county has shown an incredible lack of foresight, because we still have streets that are closed from that flood in the area. That's not planning, that's a disaster. They talk about traffic. We have four crossings on the railroad track, how many homes, how many cars? The average home in that area has 2.2 cars per house. The traffic statistics are wrong, just based on the reality. To grant it is a folly. are wrong, just based on the reality. To grant it is a folly. Don't grant favors based on wishes. Grant favors based on plans. Thank you.
Thank you.[609.29][609.29](APPLAUSE) We have Mary Gavin, followed by Andrew Shamber.
Excuse me, wait. No ma'am, no, no.
You have to speak in front of the microphone.
No ma'am.
No ma'am, you need to speak on the microphone.
The backs of your heads.
Well, you're addressing the LPA. They're facing you.
Well, I certainly like your attention. I mean, this is a taxpayers' three minutes. I've lived in Martin County 25 years. I live on Sable Street, and I'd appreciate your attention, please. Mary Gavin, as I mentioned, and I've got several concerns. The first thing I want to point out is Mr. Soro said that he had sent out the letters to the folks a thousand feet. Myself and my son, both are within a thousand feet. We got the first letter, and we have not gotten the subsequent letters. And I'm on his mailing list in the application, so I do want to make a note of that. And there are several others that have not also. Something else I want to point out is, around 10 years ago, before Mr. Nissen, I believe it was David, passed away, there was an attempt to do this rezoning. And at that time, when he realized the opposition from the residential neighbors, he gentlemanly said, this doesn't make sense. Obviously, he's not with us anymore, and the tide has changed. The question that I have for the planning board, and I don't know who that is, I know Maria is, has anybody driven the stretch? That's a yes or no question.
No ma'am, the board is not, you have three minutes. The board does not answer questions during your time.
Okay, I'm going to go on the assumption that it's no, and I can tell you that if you do drive it from Crossrip all the way down to the Bible College, you're going to be very amazed at the fact that what they're proposing does not make sense. It's obvious, even to a legally blind person. With all that said, I want to share a couple of other concerns here, and that is, the owners of the property have done extensive dirt moving. The Florida Department of Environmental Protection is investigating. I don't know if there are issues there. I'm just pointing out what we do know. There are pictures and proof of the dirt moving. There have been no permits pulled. That's what we have been informed by the Department of Environmental Protection. I know the folks on Woodmere should be very concerned. They're all on wells, and hopefully somebody at the county is looking into that as well. The other question is, does this start the roller coaster? I have an acre. I want to put five homes on my acre on Sable Street. Are you going to approve my zoning request as well? And also, are you going to buy my house when it gets flooded out because of the flooding issues? The last point I really want to make is probably the biggest concern, and that is the traffic. We are a family, community. There are baby carriages, dogs, kids, bikes on Gomez. It's already congested. Just getting out on Sable already is a challenge for me, and I don't drive at rush hour. So somebody really needs to take a hard look at, are we going to now install traffic control? Are we going to put in speed bumps? Are we going to put in stoplights and traffic lights? And lastly, the bottom line is, it's obvious this is an attempt to improve the market value of the property. If everything that they told us today is true, then why are they wasting all this money going through this rezoning process? To put an application together is $100,000. It makes no sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have, last thing is, I represent 700-plus other people who have signed a petition that don't support this. I'm going to leave this with Maria, and I'd really like everybody to make sure that they take a look at this. We'll make sure we get copies to the commissioner as well. Thank you.
Thank you.[848.31][848.31](APPLAUSE) I only have two more requests to speak forms. One is Andrew Shamber, and the other one is Brady Duris.
I only need to speak.
Okay. So if there's anyone else that wishes to speak on this matter, you need to fill out a request to speak form and get it up here for us. But go ahead, Andrew.
Hi, good evening. My name is Andrew Shamber. 34 years old. Spent my whole life in Stewart and Hope Sound, born and raised here. I own a home in Hope Sound. I know it very well. The presentation that they showed tonight was good, very persuasive, but I'm here to tell you from experience that the last thing Hope Sound needs is another cookie cutter, starting-packed neighborhood. Some people have touched on the traffic. It's bad. It's really bad. They may not have seen it lately because of COVID, but when COVID is done, November 4th, it's going to get even worse. They're going to see how bad it is. For example, the schools, I went to Hope Sound Elementary myself, and it's changed a lot. The traffic is so bad there, when it gets in session, it's backed up all the way past Powerline Road West. It's bad. We can't handle it anymore. We don't want it anymore. We understand, as Hope Sound locals, like, we can't hang on to our way of life forever, but it's a special place, and it's slipping away because of things like this. You know, I've surfed in Hope Sound, hunted in Hope Sound. I have 10 family members that live on Gomez. We know what it can handle and what it can't, and this isn't something that we want or need. And everyone feels this way. That's about all I have to say. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.[962.38][962.38](APPLAUSE) Is there anyone else? Okay, then I guess it's back up to us for deliberation and/or questions?
Yes.
And this is for the future land use, yes?
Right, yes ma'am.
This is just for the future land use. Anybody? Jim, you still there?
I'd like to say that actually, I ride my bike down Gomez every other day, and I'm quite familiar with the neighborhood, both before the June floodings, and also during the June floodings, and after the June floodings. This neighborhood is definitely one of the charming Hope Sound neighborhoods. I remember that the Carnation Farm is a Carnation Farm even. It is a neighborhood. It is inevitably going to change somewhat, but it is beholding to the LPA to do it cautiously and judiciously. And I'll wait to make a motion, but I would, or I'd say make a motion now, can't I?
Yes, you can.
I would make a motion to approve the low zoning, sorry, the low-density future land use element, and then reserve some discussion on that, and then I'd be willing to make a motion for the zoning as well. But we need to vote on this first, I believe.
Yes, sir.
So you're making, what was your motion, Jim?
My motion is to approve the low-density future land use on this Carnation property.
At the five units per acre?
Uh, no. No.
Okay.
It's the low-density future land use designation on the property.
But I think in the low-density, I think is a five unit per acre.
Five units per acre.
That's the request.
Yeah, a maximum of five units per acre, but that is not the zoning that I would say.
Right.
No, yeah, we're not the zoning.
That's not the zoning. That's just future land use. Okay, so we have a second.
I'll second the motion. But Jim, just to confirm, your motion is for the proposed low-density, which would be to accept staff's recommendation, and it's the five units per acre.
Yes, it's correct, and it would be in accordance with the rest of the neighborhood.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? No? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I'd like to oppose. I'd like to see that as two units per acre estate density, and left the same, left the way it is.
Oh, so you oppose. Okay.
I do oppose.
And for the record, I am a resident of Hope Sound.
Okay. All right, so our next item is the rezoning for the property.
And Madam Chairman, let's just make sure we don't have any other request to speak forms. We don't have anyone else that wants to speak on this portion of it?
Okay.
Is that correct? And no other requests to speak?
Did anyone that had forms up here wanted to address this matter as well?
For the rezoning.
For the rezoning?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so then I guess it's back up to us for, to either make a motion, or...
Well, I have a third comment as well. You know, we in Martin County are facing changing stormwater and drainage issues. And part of it is that we don't rely on terribly good modeling. But also, we have relied on a two-street zoneage model that is failing us. And as the water tables rise, there is no room for this water to go. And the only way forward, I think, is to look at land use that is sensible, and I think low-impact design and low-impact density is a super-important criteria for us to do. And the only available tool we have as local planning agency without changing LDRs and without changing policy is to guarantee as much space as possible. And I appreciate the estate density on this property as an alternative. But in order to conform to the majority of the rest of the neighborhood on the east side of Herrera Track in Hope Sound, it does make sense. But I think that from my perspective, a 10,000-square-foot lot is minimum. And I think that approving a 7,500-square-foot lot is, you know, and relying on the transitions to provide some sort of buffer, is not going to give the individual home site drainage and absorptions necessary to do enough stormwater management on the site. So my preference would be to allow this property to be zoned at RS4.
Okay, is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
And I will second that one also.
Okay. Any discussion from the board?
No.
Does the applicant wish to address this?
I would. And for the record, Dan Soro with the planning firm of Cotler and Hearing. And I appreciate staff's analysis and their recommendation of approval for RS5 to the board. I appreciate Commissioner Moore's comments and Commissioner Flanagan's comments. However, the reason that we chose RS5 is because it's most identical to the current zoning that's on the property. In fact, it's more restrictive than the current zoning that's on the property. So although RS4 is something, it's actually less than what's on the current property as it is today. So we would like to ask for your consideration of RS5 for this zoning request. Thank you.
A comment on that one. Two things, if I could. As was noted, this is a rezoning, not a site plan.
Yes, sir.
And again, I saw the site plan, again, which is not what we're discussing tonight. And I did appreciate the fact that on the south, it was compatible to that group to the south, and on the north. But that being said, it was even in your own proposal where it said possible, it's not possible nor proposed to do the five. And so why are we asking for that amount? And I can't remember who it was that had said something to this effect, was, if we're looking for that, it'll fit. And the same way that Mr. Moore was saying that the Sablewood, that has a reasonable line in there. But the comment that was made earlier was, if this was the developer, and we were at that level, it would be there. But this is not. This is a proposal to change the zoning, to sell the property to a developer. And so I'm sorry if I'm out of order by making that comment. Thank you. You give me this thing.
No, sir, no, sir, no. You can't see my full face behind the mask, no.
But I know that Mr. Moore was making, alluding to that, SR4 gives us 10,000 feet per acre with the unit size, and that's, I think is unacceptable for this property.
Any other comments?
And I'm sorry, I'm being a chatterbox, and I apologize. There was a comment also was made on the traffic. I don't know if this would even be under consideration. It might be at the site plan level, but would a traffic light be appropriate to be paid for by the developer? But that's not this site, correct?
Well, it'll be those, oh, go ahead, Mr. Shilling.
Yes, sir. That full analysis by the traffic engineers and the consultants will be done as part of a site plan application.
Okay. Because I kind of concur, as has been my note in my tenure on the board, is I'm kind of Mr. Traffic. When I started looking at the number of cars, and having gone to Hope Sound Elementary School so many times on that trip, in the mornings, afternoons, and evenings, I've seen the traffic, and I agree. And you don't have the option to, well, let's make it a four-lane. And like Jim had said earlier, as Jim had said earlier, that he's on that street, you know, a couple of times a week on his bicycle. So he's uniquely qualified to speak to that.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, up to us to take a vote.
No, sorry.
I don't know why.
No, ma'am, please. I understand. We must move forward.
Okay.
I'll be available for you after the meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
I'm going to oppose that one, too, because I think we should go maximum RS3 density.
Okay, so the motion carries four to one.
Thank you very much.[1557.71][1557.71](APPLAUSE)
And just for the benefit of the public, I'll throw this out here. This is only a recommendation that we make to the Board of County Commissioners. There are two more hearings, so please feel free to go to those meetings and let your commissioners know how you feel. Thank you.
Yes. Now, there's two more. Well, this will be, the next public hearing will be before the Board of County Commissioners determine whether to transmit this to the Department of Economic Opportunity. If it is transmitted, then there would be an adoption hearing that would follow that. So yes, there's potentially two more public hearings, and the notices for those dates have not been sent out yet, correct? Those dates are not established at this point?
Yes, we have not decided on a date with the applicant yet.
Correct. So there will be additional letters required and additional newspaper advertisements.
Newspaper advertisement and a letter.
Pardon me, Ms. Jones?
Okay.
Sometime, September would be the earliest, that it would be coming back, correct? Yes, and additional notices will be required.
Okay. All righty, thank you.
Thank you.
We may want to take a break, and then the public, yes?
Yeah, we have a 10-minute break for closed captioning, so we'll reconvene in 10 minutes. Thank you. Thank you.
Great, we're back then and we're going on to our next item which is Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1928 Golden Gate CRA. It's a public hearing to consider an amendment to the future land use map regarding the Golden Gate Community Redevelopment area. It's been requested by Susan Coras of the Office of Community Development Manager and it will be presented by Irene Settlemeyer, Principal Planner with Growth Management Department. Irene, so yours?
That could be a stop working. I'm sorry, I didn't.
Technology's supposed to help us, but it sometimes doesn't.
It's only, it's only good when it works, right?
Hit that little box up in the top corner, it'll get better.
All right, good evening, members of the local planning agency. Irene Settlemeyer, planner with the Growth Management Department. This agenda item, if adopted, amends the future land use map by assigning the CRA Center and the CRA Neighborhood Future Land Use Designations to the Golden Gate CRA. On the screen is a location map showing where the Golden Gate CRA is, you know, east of US, a federal highway, east of federal highway, south of the Martin County Airport.
Irene, excuse me if I could, could you hit the X in the top corner to make it the full screen?
Not the X, the box.
Not the X, the box.
I'm sorry, yeah, next to the Xbox. Thank you. Thank you.
Golden Gate has about 379 acres. It is the second smallest of the CRAs after Jensen Beach. On this image is a closer view. The western border is the FEC Railroad. Federal Highway is between a quarter of a mile and a third of a mile to the west outside the CRA. These industrial developments in this vacant land is in the city of Stewart. It's not in unincorporated Martin County. The Stewart, the Martin County golf course can be seen to the north. Stewart Yacht and Country Club development can be seen to the south and there are other residential neighborhoods to the east. This screen, I just, and you know, I receive a lot of phone calls after the, after the letters go out. And I heard from several people, the sentiment that Golden Gate was already built out. And so this is just to show all the, each of these yellow symbols indicates a vacant lot of records. So I just wanted to show that there are in fact opportunities for infill development in the Golden Gate CRA. This has nothing to do with redevelopment. These are vacant lots. So on the screen right now is the, on the left is the current future land use map. On the right is the current future land use map with the mixed use, future land use overlay shown. As you are maybe familiar by now, the red is the medium density residential, medium density residential future land use. We have a small bit of high density residential in the northeast corner of Golden Gate. Actually, only that small, the triangle in the far left corner, or excuse me, far right corner, that's the only parcel that's actually developed at the high density level. The rest is developed at the same intensity and density as the rest of Golden Gate. Just that triangle has a 10-unit condominium development. Within the mixed use, future land use overlay, you have the industrial future land use, which is yellow. You have some general institutional future land use in the northwest corner part of the fairgrounds. And then you have, the lilac color is the general commercial future land use. That's all within the mixed use, future land use overlay. We also have the dark green, which is the Howard Lamar Park. So as you know, within the mixed use, future land use overlay, a mixed use project can occur. That is something with residential and commercial or compatible industrial use can occur if it's part of the same project. If it's not a mixed use project, you have to comply with the existing future land use. So here where you have the medium density residential right across the street from the general commercial. On these red parcels, medium density residential, you can do mixed use or you can do residential, but you cannot do a commercial project. Right across the street, you can do mixed use or you can do commercial, but you can't do a residential project. So those are the kinds of things that we think don't work right and these are the things that we're seeking to change. So on the screen right now, again, on the left is the future land use map with the mixed use, future land use overlay displayed. And on the right is the proposed future land use map. The mixed use, future land use overlay largely becomes the CRA Center future land use. The CRA Center is the rose color on the map on the right. The exceptions to the mixed use, future land use overlay becoming CRA Center is the industrial future land use, which is yellow and between Dixie Highway and Railroad Avenue. And then that one parcel that's east of Dixie Highway. And then the institutional future land use. If I go, I'm going to flip back to the earlier map. There's some additional. So you can see on this map, there's where the institutional is. And on the proposed map, there's some additional institutional. This is county-owned property.
I'm sorry, where, where did we say county-owned property?
I'm sorry?
Where was county-owned property you just noted? You just said this is county-owned property.
Yes, all the institutional, all the property with institutional future land use is, is county-owned property.
Okay, thank you.
This, well, this little parcel down here might not be county-owned. But down on the corner of Camino and Fairmont Avenue. So, see, so another change, so generally, industrial future land use is retained. Nothing that currently is industrial future land use is changed to CRA Center or CRA Neighborhood. And similarly, nothing that is currently institutional is changed to CRA Center or CRA Neighborhood. Some additional properties get the CRA, excuse me, get the institutional future land use. And there is a small portion of less than three acres that currently has general commercial and it is designated industrial. So here, on this map, you can see between Dixie Highway and Railroad Avenue, there's this 2.7 acre tract, which involves four separate parcels that has general commercial, future land use. And in the proposed future land use map, it becomes industrial. So that change from general commercial to industrial is a little bit outside our normal rhythm that we have followed. But when staff analyzed this and looked at the existing uses and looked at many factors, we concluded that industrial made the most sense for that, those couple of parcels. We did individualized outreach. Susan Coras, the CRA manager, sent an individualized personalized letter to those two property owners to talk to them about our suggestion that they get the industrial future land use and instead of becoming CRA Center. And we talked with them, met with them on the phone and they have agreed that that is the best designation for their property. So the CRA Neighborhood Future Land Use Designation is everything else. It's the medium density residential and the high density residential become CRA Neighborhood. So that concludes my presentation. It's a brief summary of a more detailed staff report that you've received. I am happy to answer any questions you have.
Anybody have any questions?
Can I just confirm that all the required notices were sent out? Did you, did you indicate?
In the, your, in your agenda materials, you have the documentation of the notices. It includes the published advertisement in the newspaper, the signs that were posted in the Golden Gate Neighborhood and the mailing that the CRA office sent to everyone who owns property within Golden Gate and within a thousand feet of the boundaries of Golden Gate CRA.
Thank you.
All right. Jim, any questions from you?
Yeah, what, what is a industrial permitted use versus a general commercial permitted use on those properties? Is there any increased intensity of use permitted in the CRA?
The, the permitted use, permitted uses and the development standards are provided for in the land development regulations. And we have an industrial zoning sub-district, so in our next agenda item, that will be covered. There are a few more permitted uses. The industrial future land use allows a few more uses. It, it allows less land cover. It allows less building cover, not land cover, excuse me. It allows less building cover than the CRA Center. So, and when in the, as has been the case with all of the CRA Future Land Use Map Amendments and the Zoning Atlas Amendment and the adoption of the LDRs, the CRAs are now in a place where the future land use map in several instances allows potentially more development than the land development regulations. So for example, the CRA Neighborhood Future Land Use Designation, as the policy exists in Chapter 18 of the comp plan, the CRA Neighborhood permits up to 10 dwelling units an acre. In, in this, in the, the zoning sub-district that is proposed for Golden Gate to implement the CRA Neighborhood Future Land Use, the zoning sub-district, let me start over. The zoning sub-district that will implement the CRA Neighborhood Future Land Use caps the density at eight dwelling units an acre, just as it exists now with the medium density residential future land use, eight dwelling units an acre. So the, in the industrial zoning sub-district, some of the basic requirements in terms of maximum building cover and minimum open space, they are determined by the comprehensive plan. And I believe it's 20% minimum open space and maximum building coverage of 50%, but I'm speaking off of memory. So does that answer your question, Mr. Moore?
It did, but we're, we're not permitting 10 units to the acre in industrial, are we?
Well, in the industrial, in the industrial future land use, if you do a mixed use project, you can do some residential and up to 10 units an acre. So because currently those property owners have the ability to do mixed use development and so we didn't want to take that away. You can't, you can't convert one of these industrial parcels to a strictly residential complex, like a townhouse complex or a multifamily building. But if you were to do a mixed use project in the industrial future land use, you would be able to have residential.
Okay. I appreciate it, Irene. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Anyone want to make a motion?
Madam Chair, just a week maybe asked if there's any public comment, just for the record.
Is there any public comment? Being, seeing none.
We go outside and find a few. I'm sure they'll come in. No, they're not. They're all through with pitchforks.
I approve staff's recommendation to send this forward for approval from the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider the creation of Division 7, the Golden Gate, Golden Gate Community Redevelopment Code of Article 12, Redevelopment Code, Land Development Regulations and amending the zoning atlas. This is quasi-judicial. It's been requested by Susan Coras, Office of Community Development Manager, and it will be presented by Dana Little of the Urban Design, the Urban Design Director at the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council. Welcome Dana and Susan.
Wait, just a minute, we need to.
I, I have no expertise communications.
I have none.
I, I have none.
Okay, we need to swear people in. Anyone in, this is quasi-judicial Denise. You have to do it one more time.
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the LPA Board. Susan Coras, Manager of the Office of Community Development. We bring for your consideration tonight an item that reviews both the proposed Article 12, I'm eating this, Division 7 of Golden Gate Redevelopment Code, Land Development Regulations and the proposed amendments of the zoning atlas to assign the Golden Gate Redevelopment Zoning District. The complete agenda item, I think, has already been submitted. Just like to reiterate that the public was notified via signage and via newspaper article. 855 letters were mailed to those within the CRA boundary, Golden Gate CRA boundary and those a thousand feet out. Mr. Dana Little is here from the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council to present this evening. And as always, we have our growth management and legal expertise here in case there are any additional questions. But before I turn it over to Dana, I just wanted to say thank you all so much for your support through this. This is the last time we'll be bringing LDRs, CRA LDRs to you. And I'll say thank you in advance, in hopes that you'll be going with our recommendation tonight. But just wanted to say thanks so much. It's, it's really been a, a good experience coming before you guys.
Thank you. Dana?
Good evening, Dana Little with Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council and thank you for stealing my thunder, Susan.
You can say thank you again.
Yes, this is the presentation of the proposed Land Development Regulation Amendments and Rewrite for Golden Gate, the CRA in Golden Gate. You've seen this slide before. We started this effort back in August of 2018. And each of the yellow dates are, were important dates of adoption. September 24th, when the, when the future land use element went through, as well as the first CRA Jensen Beach was adopted. December 17th, RIO. May 5th, Old Palm City was adopted. June 16th, Hope Sound was adopted. And so far, we've had 41 public meetings, 21 of which have been evening meetings. This will be 22 tonight, 22 and a half maybe. But we've done over 100, nearly 110 interviews throughout the whole process. This is the project schedule. You can see we're down here. Since we saw you last, you know, we, we did, we did slip a little bit in terms of time. There were a couple of months there where the CRA and the NACs were not meeting until the county was able to put together this arrangement because of COVID-19. So all things considered, we really haven't lost much time. And we're really still on track hopefully, well, we'll be hopefully finally adopting the entire effort in October. This is our favorite schedule. All of the green boxes are now completed, adoption hearings. And you can see there we are, August 6th. And we, after, after this evening, we just have two meetings left for the entire effort. September 15th for Golden Gate and Port Salerno at the BCC and then the final adoption hearing on August 27th. Assume everything, assuming everything goes smoothly. You've seen this slide before. Just in a nutshell, there are three main elements to what it is we're trying to do. The future land use designations with the new two categories that Irene just presented. Really that was critical to get rid of the mixed use overlays, not only in the future land use, but also in the land development regulation. As you've heard me say before, when you've got regulations with overlays in the comp plan and you've got regulations with overlays in the LDR and they don't always, are in sync with one another and create, you know, conflict and confusion. So that was one of the core elements of this whole effort was to do the hard work of the county-initiated rezonings and the county-initiated future land use map amendments. And then basically to create, you know, new, new zoning categories. So Golden Gate will become the Golden Gate CRA zoning district. And within that, via the regulating plan, there will be sub-districts that Irene mentioned earlier, which include, in Golden Gate, will include industrial, core, general, et cetera. All of the, all of the, the updates and changes that we've made for all of the CRAs are rooted in their original vision plans. This one was established in Golden Gate in 2002 and then revised in 2009. There was also the visioning report for Golden Gate in 2015. So I want to make sure that, you know, the original intent of the CRAs is still intact, but what we've done is sharpened the tools to implement those visions. You're aware of this. When we got started, we realized early on that we really need to update the comprehensive plan so that it's consistent with what we're trying to do with the land development regulations. So Chapter 18 was, is a new chapter within the comp plan, which is dedicated to the CRAs. And then Article 12 is essentially a new chapter in the LDRs, which is also dedicated to the CRAs. So since both of these have been created from scratch simultaneously, they are in, I would like to say, perfect synchronization. We're hoping it's perfect, but we, you know, we might find some, some things to fix as we go along. The Chapter 18, as I mentioned, was, was adopted September 24th in 2019. And as Irene just presented, it takes the two future land use maps, which are on the left, the existing ones, with the lower one being the, being the overlay, and combine them into a single future land use map, which is on the right. And that's what you just voted on. Article 12, which is what we're really focusing on in this presentation, is the new land development regulations and I pointed out those adoption dates so far. Likewise, the two maps on the left are the existing zoning map and the existing zoning overlay district maps. You can see the one on the lower left. There are one, two, three, four, five different zoning overlay districts in Golden Gate today. And those were generated out of the vision plan, but you know, they, because they were overlays and they're overlays in the future land use, as I mentioned as well, they're not always in sync. So what we've done is on the right-hand side, we're proposing the single colored Golden Gate zoning map, which will make it very obvious to find in the overall zoning atlas. And then that directs you to the regulating plan that we'll talk about in just a minute. Just as a recap, when we, when we adopted the first round, or when we adopted Jensen Beach, we also adopted the Division 1 of the, of Article 12. And that's the general purpose division. It talks about what is a regulating plan? How do we come up with the permitted use tables? You know, how do you read the development standards? You know, signage standards, fence standards, et cetera. And those apply to all of the CRA. So here's the, the table of contents, if you will. Division 2 through Division 7, which is Jensen Beach. Here we are, Division 7, Golden Gate. But all of these have been adopted so far. And as I said, Division 6, Port Salerno goes on September 15th. But Division 1 applies to all of the subsequent divisions in terms of the general provisions and definitions, et cetera. This is the regulating plan that we're proposing for Golden Gate. One of the, one of the comments that came up at our last meeting, which I think is, is valid, is, you know, especially here, because of the, the way the screen's calibrated or because the computer's calibrated, the colors are hard to see on the screen. Hopefully they're easier to see in your packets. But what we are do is what, what we are doing is that when these are adopted and they're actually put into, they're actually codified, we're working closely with, with county staff to use existing GIS color schemes that'll be, that'll distinguish these sub-districts a little bit better than what you're seeing on the screen right now. Because the mustard and the taupe, you know, using Irene's different color definitions, cafe au lait, right? You know, it's hard to see on the screen, but what you do see however, on the west side of federal, this is all of the industrial sub-district, which reflects the future land use designations. The red, which is here, is the core. This is really the area where you might see the most town center mixed use type of stuff, the more intense type development. We didn't carry it further south because there's already a lot of existing uses that are there that we didn't want to see prohibited or created into existing non-conformities. So, and they're light industrial type uses that, that are reflected in this sub-district called corridor. And then the area here is general, which is sort of that transition between the core and the strict residential neighborhood. And then rather than having multiple sub-districts for the residential area over here, we have one, which is multifamily. And it's called multifamily because of the allowable densities up to eight units per acre, which were described before. And also, in the existing regulations, there are different building types that are allowed that we wanted to make sure that we weren't prohibiting somebody's potential to do a building type by removing it for future, for future consideration. We have run into that in a couple of the other CRAs, you may recall if, if I've brought it up or if we've brought it up. One gentleman, for instance, in Port Salerno, there was a building type that he had planned on building on his property with certain, you know, with certain regulations. And we were actually shifting and modifying that. And he made an appeal to us. We're like, well, you know, this is, this is a good example of how we can try to be as consistent with, you know, improve what we have today, but be consistent where it's really important. That's a long way of saying that all of this is the multifamily sub-district at this point. This is a little bit closer. These are those public lands, the public service district properties. These are some actually beautiful stormwater retention areas. The Lamar Howard Park and Community Center is here. This is public recreation. There's also a small sliver there. These are public servicing up here. So you recall, in the future land use, they're all institutional, but we break them down into what exactly they, they mean in the regulating plan. We think that's important, especially as people are considering, say, moving into Golden Gate, which we've heard about more of, of interest in folks moving to Golden Gate or looking to invest. You know, it's nice to know where the park is relative to, you know, the properties that you're looking at or where the stormwater areas are, et cetera. Like the other CRAs, we have what we call a street regulating plan. This is really a guide for the CRA going forward to reflect those streets that might be prioritized for future improvements, whether it be some of the complete street work that the Martin MPO is doing. Or for instance, here is the Camino Trail. There are improvements that are happening there. So this reflects some of the intention and priorities of streets and connectivity going forward in the CRA.
If I could interject one thing. I'll go back to that last slide. When I was the Director of Transportation and had to run school buses through there, that was a major issue as to, you know, because only two of the streets, I think, go north and south. And a lot of cars coming down there and in the mornings and everybody's trying to get to work and stopping school buses. So any kind of adaptation that would occur because of this would be greatly appreciated by bus drivers and parents.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Side note.
This is, it probably goes without saying, but the, the Golden Gate probably has the greatest number of pedestrian and multimodal activity than any of the CRAs, except for maybe Port Salerno. Salerno. And lots of kids, as you know, lots of moving around. So, we think it's a great way to at least start prioritizing this. Now, you've got a mechanism where you can add to it over time as well. And to link into that, while we're not going to have any streets that are 150 feet wide in Golden Gate, hopefully, you know, there are instructions for, if you did want to improve a neighborhood street, there are examples of how to do that. So, these aren't regulatory, they're illustrative, but they were part of the existing code, and we just sort of prettyed them up a little bit and put them on individual pages. We've talked about this, the permitted use table. There's over 120 allowable uses permitted throughout all the different CRAs, although not all uses are permitted in all areas of the CRAs. But in order to make the document a little bit more user-friendly, we've created the permitted use table. Where in Division 1, we've created use groups. So, by looking at the intensity of the allowable uses, we've created five different residential use groups, one agricultural, 17 different commercial use groups, public institutional, et cetera. And this way, we don't have to drag all of those uses for each of the CRAs, and we can reference them all. So, say that there's a use that the county wants to add that's consistent throughout all of the CRAs, or take one away, you only have to really affect Division 1. So, this is what that looks like in the Golden Gate Code. We've got a single table, which shows the permitted use groups within the CRA. So, these are the sub-districts, core, general, corridor, industrial, and multifamily. So, for instance, mobile homes are not permitted anywhere in Golden Gate, and that's consistent with what's allowed today. Single-family dwellings are permitted in the general. They're not permitted in the corridor. They're not permitted in the industrial, and they're not permitted in the multifamily. To Mr. Moyers' question earlier regarding the residential and industrial, you can't do single-family houses in an industrial section. It has to be a mixed-use project, meaning there's a commercial element to it as well. So, the industrial uses as well, we talked about that a little bit earlier. So, in the industrial area, construction services, limited and extensive, and convenience stores with fuel are permitted, as they are today, but those are different. Those three uses are not permitted in the core or in the general. So, there's flexibility, and it's more consistent with what's on the ground today. But this is the permitted use table. And if there's ever any question, "Well, what does retail services extensive impact mean?" You can always just go back to Division 1, and it goes into greater description. Likewise, the companion table to that is the development standards, where we've taken and tried to summarize some of the key regulatory elements for development. So, for instance, for each, again, each of these columns is a sub-district. You've got what the minimum lot area in square feet is. You had an extensive discussion about that for an earlier item, you know, looking at the comparison tables of lot sizes and densities, et cetera. This tries to summarize all these sub-districts onto one table, excuse me. So, for instance, the issue of density in the core, the general in the corridor, that's 15 units per acre. That's consistent with the other CRAs, and what's allowed on the ground today in the mixed-use overlay. But industrial, however, is allowed up to 10 units per acre, and there's a footnote that if you go down to the bottom, it says it must be in a mixed-use project. And then in multifamily, which would be all of the residential types that were, you know, the medium-density eight in the future land use, they are all now, regardless of the building type, limited to eight units per acre. And then, speaking of building types, as you know, we've got a great array of them, from shop-front building all the way down to industrial building, boat barns, all-yard houses, cottages, et cetera. And there's a plate or a table for each one of those. This, at the bottom of the development standard, shows you which building types are permitted where. So, for instance, in the industrial section, you're permitted a boat barn, an industrial building, a live-work building, an office building, a mixed-use building, a shop front, et cetera. But no residential, as we said before, unless it's in a mixed-use type of project. And these are what those look like. These are set up so that you can, if you, you know, if you're a visual person, you can read the information visually. If you read things or understand things in a narrative better, there's a description, or there's tabular information, all of it reinforcing what the permitted or the allowable or required setbacks and uses, et cetera are. This is the boat barn. We like to show that, because it's so interesting and unique. And then, this is the industrial building type. And we bring this up specifically for Golden Gate, because as you'll recall, the west side of federal is all industrial. That's the front door to Golden Gate. And it needs to get cleaned up a little bit. And we've talked offline about maybe working with the CRA, or the CRA working on, or with growth management, you know, some programs, bless you, to, you know, maybe bring into compliance some of the code issues that aren't in compliance today, in terms of chain-link fence, no landscaping, barbed wire, that kind of thing. But we've also intensified, or we've added to, we've augmented the landscape requirements for industrial. Sort of new projects come in, that they need to either have a frontage type, meaning that they're addressing the street, or they've got to have a front setback that's landscaped. Not taking away any of their uses, or any of their allowed intensity or density, but just, you know, rather than storing all of your stuff right up next to the sidewalk, you should have some relief. And we think that'll go a long way to improve in the overall public image of the corridor there. But it will take some time. And so, this is a program the CRA will be looking at. These are the different furnished types. You've seen these before. You know, how do you detail a shop front versus a arcade, or a bracketed entry, or those type of things. These are only required for the core, general, and corridor building types. You have to pick one of them. It's not, you're not required to do so for residential. So, again, this is our overall adoption schedule. Assuming that we can get a recommendation to move forward this evening, we will be going to the Board of County Commissioners on the 15th of September. As I said, we'll hear this item, as well as the adoption of Port Salerno. And then, October 27th is it. So, thank you very much, and I'll try to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Jim, you have any questions?
Yeah, well, it's my usual question, with regard to Golden Gate. You know, one of the concerns I have is, especially on the industrial lots on the western side of Dixie Highway. You know, if we start requiring landscaping and other things, we've already got a pedestrian situation where they are daily in risk of being run over. And I'm really concerned that putting more shade trees, or any other way of disguising when a pedestrian is about to walk off the sidewalk and cross in front of traffic, is just asking for death. You know, I think that a streetscape that is functional, and well-lit, and has pedestrian crossings, that makes sense, is far more important and useful than putting landscaping in front of these industrial buildings.
I think Susan wants to address that. It's a very good point, but Susan will address that.
Susan Coras, for the record. Mr. Moyers, just for your knowledge, there is a project that will be happening, starting in 2021. That section of Dixie Highway from Indian Street to Jefferson is going to have a little bit of a makeover. So, we agree with you that it's a very unsafe area. This is a project that we are doing with Public Works and DOT. And it's going to...
I just hope it doesn't end up being either Salerno or riot.
No, we're not doing a road diet, actually. We're leaving the four lanes of traffic to each way. And instead of having a lane in the middle, we're putting in a median, five crosswalks, and, what do they call them, the pedestrian?
Pedestrian lighted.
Yeah, yes. Pedestrian landings, where there will be additional lighting, so that people aren't going to have to go, which they won't, walk from Jefferson all the way to, you know, Norman to cross the street. They're going to have places to cross the street where they will be visible in between.
The middle lane is really important for stacking, because Indian Street has become a major thoroughfare. And for majority of highway outside of Indian Street, that middle lane is used for stacking for a left turn. And with a median running through there, there will not be any room for that traffic to move across.
It's not a...
Especially if it's stopped at a railroad.
It's not a complete median, it's a broken median. So, there are, there will be spaces for people to be able to make left turns.
And if I may add, this is a DOT road.
Yeah.
They wouldn't let us do things that are going to impede traffic flow, or create more dangerous situations on the roadway. And I think...
Well, Salerno.
I'm not sure what the reference is.
I mean, the CRA of Salerno has all kinds of traffic impediments, and also areas that make traveling through that area difficult and dangerous for pedestrians and bicyclists.
So, what we're going to be doing on Dixie and Golden Gate is actually, should slow traffic down a little bit, which will also help with the safety factor for bicyclists and pedestrians. As well, there will be bike lanes.
If I could also add to that, kind of what Jim's saying, too. That turning lane off of Dixie on to Indian, going towards, Saturday mornings, or actually Saturdays around noon, when all the boats are coming out of the water, they are double, because it's a car and a trailer, or a truck and a trailer, and it stacks way back up. I mean, I've been stacked up back almost to Benito, which is three and a half blocks on that turn lane. So, yeah, whatever, and like you're saying, DOT has regulations of that one, but that better be an extensive turning lane through there.
I mean, and also, when the train's coming through, you can be backed up a very long time. And I'm not convinced that DOT is planning for this rail line at all.
And to throw that out there again, school buses, because where the bus barn is down there on the northern end of this.
Right, it is there.
Lot of bus traffic coming through that way.
This is Dana. Back to your original point, we are not prioritizing private property landscaping over public right-of-way pedestrian improvements at all. We don't think they're mutually exclusive. We don't have control of what the DOT is doing, through this effort, what the DOT is doing on the roadway. I think, I think, I can't speak for staff, but I've heard that they should be significant improvements for pedestrian and non-motorist mobility. But the point of the landscaping element was that, over time, the private properties could participate. Because there's, as you know, there's very, the sidewalks are narrow, there's no right-of-way left. There's no room to go in and do, you know, street trees on the side of the road. So, this would be a way to soften up the edges on the west side, because they are pretty unsightly right now as they exist.
They are, but, I mean, they've already taken up as much space as they can. And, you know, the beautification project and the drainage project on the side of that industrial section doesn't do a whole lot of good for the CRA. Just, you know, I have a hard time wondering where that, this money went.
Okay. Any other comments, Jim?
No, it's a soapbox issue of mine. I apologize for jumping up and down on it.
That's okay.
We feel you.
I just hope that the money is spent on utility and safety, rather than, you know, a project that is going to spend a lot of money to get not a lot more safety or a lot more utility.
So noted.
Point taken. Okay. Do we have any other comments from the members?
No.
I'd make a motion that we accept the amendments to the comprehensive plan for Golden Gate.
Oh, second?
It's to the land development regulations.
Land development, sorry.
Let's make sure we reflect that there are no members of the public in the room, just for the record.
Sorry.
That's okay. That's, I have to, yeah, he gives me something to do.
Yeah, there's... Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. And to echo Susan's point earlier, you know, this has been a real great team effort with the new director, Paul, and, you know, Krista and the CRA. So, it's been, we've, all of the CRA plans have come out better, having gone through this board, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
I will make one comment. You know, I've been impressed with the entire process and the great work that you guys have done. And I will say this, in a lot of discussions, both in the comprehensive plan and the LDRs for Indian Town, I've brought up what you guys have been doing over and over and over again, the ideas and the things, the streetscapes and so on and so forth. So, I don't know of any better compliment to that, to say we're recreating Indian Town, and I'm referencing what Martin County, what we've done here, or what you guys have done, actually, at the CRA. So, I'm really, really impressed with it.
Thank you very much.
And the word that you used earlier, continuity, that's the thing I'm looking. It's all getting together. You don't have a lot of little isolation pockets. So, kudos for that.
I mean, yeah, thank you.
Thanks. Okay. And our final agenda item for tonight is a public hearing to consider amending Section 3.201(c) accessory uses by zoning districts of Article 3 zoning districts, land development regulations, after the declaration of a local state of emergency, authorizing the temporary use of recreational vehicles at a dwelling on the property that is uninhabitable. It has been requested and will be presented by Krista Story, Senior Assistant County Attorney.
And hopefully, I can find this item. Let's see, get out of this. It's a very short item. It might take me longer to get there than, let's see here.
Go back one. Go back.
Hold it. Over this?
Here, Rebecca.
Nope, not that one. Get out of, I just need to get back to the agenda. Is this the...
RV ordinance.
That is it. Thank you so much. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chairman. This is a fairly simple request, and it does come out of the current situation and the declaration of emergency related to the Hope Heights flooding. And the request is to change one portion of the land development regulations to allow the utilization on a temporary basis of recreational vehicles. And the proposal is the amendment of Section 3.201(c), and this is to address a need recognized within Emergency Order 20-14 regarding Hope Heights flooding. What the draft ordinance would do is propose that after a declaration of a local state of emergency, that temporary use of recreational vehicles for occupancy would be authorized when a dwelling on the property is uninhabitable. The emergency order that, I believe it's still in place, it temporarily suspended a provision of the land development regulations, which prohibited that. So, that's the first issue. The second issue is, an amendment to the ordinance is necessary to provide a solution which extends beyond the time that emergency orders are typically applicable to, which I believe is a maximum of 90 days, unless there, unless additional declarations of emergency. And that 90-day time period, I may be off on. But by codifying this language that's before you, it would provide this opportunity to provide individuals with some relief. They could live on their property, and live within their recreational vehicles. And the conditions that are proposed would just limit it to a maximum not to exceed one year from the date the dwelling becomes uninhabitable. The recreational vehicle for safety purposes would have to be set up based on the manufacturer's specifications, and any applicable requirements of the Health Department in terms of disposal of waste products and those types of things. So, it is a recommendation... So it is a recommendation by staff, um, for your approval and recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. And, um, it is proposed currently to go to the Board of County Commissioners on Tuesday the 11th because this, we think this is a, a need to address some of the, um, situations that particularly residents of Hope Town. But it would apply countywide. It's be codified so we wouldn't need emergency orders in the future to just address particular situations. So, I mean, it's been reviewed by the growth management staff. We've had, everyone had input. We think it's a good solution to a, um, a situation with that some of our residents that find themselves in. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
The only one I, oh, go ahead, Jim.
Krista, what, is it specific or vague enough, I guess, um, to handle, you know, all neighborhoods, all RVs? Um, I mean, I think RV is a fairly large-
Yeah, that's, that's where I was going to.
Um, you know, sort of style of, of vehicle. And, and I think the sanitary hookup issue is a pretty serious one. And I don't know if the county's contemplating pump-out service or, it's moving some of them after they have been sort of in place, um, can be a, a challenge.
I will, um, take a, I will attempt to answer a couple of those questions and then I may have to see if, um, anyone else, Mr. Doolan or Mr. Schilling can help with the others. In terms of the first question, this provision applies in all zoning districts, so it's countywide. Within Article III, and I, I didn't include this, we do have a definition of recreational vehicles, which is fairly encompassing. Mr. Doolan worked on some revisions to Article III to update our language regarding recreational vehicles. So it's fairly wide-reaching. Um, and I'm looking at Mr. Doolan and, uh, to confirm that I'm correct, at the issue you've raised about the disposal sanitary, I, I do not have an answer to that. I don't know if anybody else has.
Clyde Doolan, for the record, um, you're correct, Mr. Moyer. It can be, the sanitation can be an important issue. That's why we included the note about following the manufacturer's specifications regarding, uh, both the stabilization of the vehicle, the electrical, the pot of water and the sewage connections. And, uh, Item C about the Health Department is specific to that issue as well. The Health Department, I think, has the ability to deal with the environmental health issues of connecting up to septic tanks, uh, if that's an option. Uh, the Health Department regularly, uh, oversees and regulates, uh, mobile home parks and, and those types of facilities. So they have some understanding of, of how to deal with the septic and the sewage from these units. Uh, and going on to, or going up to the other issue of the variety of units, um, we included a few years ago, the definition of RV or recreational vehicle from state statute. It's inclusive of the fifth wheels, it's inclusive of travel trailers, um, pop-up, uh, trailers, um, everything that the state statute defines, uh, we included in, in our land development regulations as well. So it, um, it covers the gamut of different RV types.
Thank you, Clyde.
Okay. And you're good?
Yeah, that was same thing, because I'm just sitting here thinking of abuse. Like if I put a pup tent in the back of my pickup truck, am I now defined as an RV?
I don't think so.
No, that's what I'm saying. I'm just, I'm just thinking, I have to think of what would the abuse that I would probably try to do to get around it and see if that would work.
Okay. So any other comments from the staff? Any public comments?
Thank you, ma'am. You, you did my job. Thank you.
Seeing none, um, I'll take a motion to, entertain a motion to approve.
Move for Krista's recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Second. Okay. Any further discussion?
No.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay. So now we're on to our comments. Well, seeing as how we have no public, I'm going to assume there's no public comment. Um, any comment from the members?
No.
Well, thank you all for, uh, for accommodating me. I, I would like to suggest that, you know, the, the flooding in the county has provided an opportunity to discuss low-impact development. Um, and I, I would like to contemplate working, you know, with a workshop over that issue.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any staff comment?
So we do have a couple, we do have a few, at least one item for the 20th that we continue tonight. So we have a-
Right. At least one?
At least one, and there's a-
Was public coming forward?
Yes. Uh, that's 20th, I believe we continued that too.
Yes, yes, we did. So, anyway.
Yeah, we have a full agenda for you, I think, on the 20th. Uh, we have two or three items, uh, one of which will be, uh, I think, pulpit at Christ Fellowship, textaments.
Oh, right, okay. All right.
Okay. All righty then. Well, if that's all, we, uh, have this meeting adjourned. Thank you very-